Meeting of the Commission to Order. Thank you all for being here. We're going to talk about the county facilities studies that we talked about for a little while at our last meeting, but we're going to take a deeper dive in that today. So thanks, everyone, for being here.
Okay, Commissioners, Chairman. We have with us Rachel and Kenneth Myers. They're from CPL. They're going to update us on the comprehensive plan. And we're going to do a deeper dive into some of the plans that we've been looking at here last week. So thank you for your time.
All right. I'm Rachel Nelson with CPL. With this, I'd like to just Do I have to point this in a certain direction? Okay, there we go, I think. Anywhere. So I do want to invite you to jump out and speak up if you have any questions during this. We have a couple of decision points along the way that we do want to have discussions about as we go through the presentation instead of saving all the discussion for the end. So if there are any questions as this data comes up. This process has been very data intensive, so there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes that you won't see everything for. So if you have additional questions on that and want more information, we can provide that. So today, what we'll go through briefly is an analysis of the building maintenance. We've gone through and looked at building conditions for these 38 different buildings. We are getting the estimates back on what that looks like over a 15-year period. And we've also ranked those buildings accordingly. We've also done a space needs analysis with a heavy focus on each of the departments within Buncombe County, looking at space needs priorities, the county facilities, the non-library side, and then with the library facilities, specifically a deeper dive into those. We have a couple of decision points on those items. First, on the building maintenance, like I mentioned, 38 buildings that we did an analysis of, each of the different elements of those buildings was rated on a scale from one to five, one being the lowest. And then with that analysis, we were able to take an average condition of each of those buildings. So we have, there are 26 of the 38 buildings were rated an average of three and a half or lower, or below three and a half. And so looking at the number of those buildings and the number of improvements and maintenance items needed, there's some fairly significant funding that's needed over the next 15 years to take care of a lot of maintenance issues, ADA issues, code compliance, things like that. In terms of the space needs priorities, there are a number of leased facilities that Buncombe County currently leases. A sample of those is listed here with the Swananoa Library, the Hughes Building, Mountain Mobility Board of Elections. Those happen to be some of the lowest-conditioned buildings in terms of their needs over a long term. And then those annual lease costs are noted on the screen as well. Looking at some of the other buildings that have higher maintenance costs over the next 15 years, buildings that we'll be discussing a little bit more in depth as we move through this, the grounds garage, 52 Cox, Allport Building, interchange, and register of deeds, those conditions are noted, as well as the anticipated cost over 15 years. And again, that anticipated cost is not all in year one by any means, and that includes upgrades needed to meet code compliance. It includes some maintenance items and different things like that. For priority, for the best use of space, looking at, again, a sample of those buildings, we've identified a few of these that may be better used, these facilities may be better used with different departments in them, or these departments may be better served in a different location because of adjacency needs, because of condition of facility, because of other programmatic needs. One of the first things that we did after going through all of our assessment of the facilities and of the departments was put together a list of drivers that drive the potential need for change or for improvement as a plan moving forward for Buncombe County. One of the main drivers we identified, because we started this project during COVID and during the age of working from home and telecommuting, was that telecommuting aspect. So that affects, these departments that are affected are not all of them. These are just the ones that are affected the most in terms of quantity of employees, and then the buildings that those are located within. And I'll get a little bit more into the telecommuting numbers as we move forward. Moving HHS staff from 35 Woodfin to 40 Cox in order to consolidate the department, allow for better adjacency, and also that ties back to that first telecommuting point as well. Creation of a consolidated building for forward-facing departments, primarily those departments that you see listed there. And those, again, are departments that work together a lot. Those are departments that have a lot of public facing, even during times of COVID right now. Those are departments that need parking spaces for the public, for staff. We know that there is a plan for that new fleet and general services building that potentially impacts general services, grounds, and fleet buildings. And then those three buildings are then vacated and have the opportunity for backfill in some regard. The creation of a second main downtown ambulance facility. Condition of facilities, as we kind of talked about before, making sure that for those facilities that need a lot of capital investment in the future, that there is a plan for either for that to happen or for those departments to relocate out of a facility that needs that investment. And the leased buildings, like we talked about. The creation of a central training center that could potentially be partnered with an EOC. Accessibility concerns, this primarily affected recreation services in terms of our discussions, but this does affect more than just that one department. Creation of an ag center that brings some of their partners into the same facility. A potential separation of veteran services with HHS Veteran Services and does not necessarily need to be located with the rest of the HHS department. It could be better served with maybe a storefront location. And a potential separation of Wick West and the Sheriff's Office that are currently directly adjacent to each other at the Lester Crossing Building. To get a little deeper into the telecommuting, there are currently 465 people, employees, in Buncombe County telecommuting. In our surveys that we went through with every single department, 283 people indicated that they would telecommute post-pandemic if allowed. So there is a potential for maybe even more than 283 to do some part-time telecommuting if allowed. The departments most heavily affected by that are the Information Technology Department, which does a lot of its work as a semi-telecommute currently in the way that they work with the rest of the county staff. The Public Health Economic Services and Social Work Services, again, a lot of those people are also out in the field a lot and maybe only needing touchdown spaces. So we do acknowledge that we still need to provide some touchdown shared spaces. Maybe even those people 100% telecommuting are still coming in one day a week to meet with their team. And so what we've done is a rough calculation of the amount of space that potentially is reduced from what the county needs. If we look at about, you're saving about 80 square feet per person for that personal office space or cubicle space times 283 people, that's about 22,700 square feet reduction. So this is our first decision point. Just wanted to have a conversation on if the Board of Commissioners wanted to allow for telecommuting on a permanent basis.
Any questions or comments, Board?
I have a quick question. That mic is very hot. Bullet three lists four departments, I guess, that you talked with through your surveys. Does that constitute all 283 people, or is it the overwhelming majority, or kind of?
That's a good question. It does not constitute all 283 people, but it is the overwhelming majority. It's about 40 to 60 people in each of those departments.
And I have a couple of questions. So I guess one thing is, with those departments that you're looking at, do you expect growth in those? So even though you have several people saying that they would be willing to telecommute now, what's kind of the expected growth in those departments?
Do you want me to go ahead? Yeah, there is some, there is some growth expected across the county as a whole. It was, I would say, a little bit less than what we were expecting. If we take a growth factor on all of the, on all of the departments, and we multiply that by, I think we looked at 140 square feet per person because we need some extra conference space, break space, those kinds of things, it's still less than the 22,700 square feet. And I can, I can pull the data for the exact growth numbers for each of those departments, too.
Thank you. My other question is, so when did you ask people about whether they'd be willing to telecommute? Because one thing I've noticed, about three months in, there were lots of people who seemed to enjoy telecommuting. A year into it, there's a, seems to be fewer people who are enjoying telecommuting. So I'm wondering when you assess that data.
Yeah, we sent out the survey. I don't remember. I think we started in this, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was in the fall because I think we came on board in August timeframe, and that went out in, let's say, I think October it was.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up on that particular piece, then. For folks who do want to telecommute, though, would there be an opportunity to have shared workspace? So if somebody needed to be in on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they could, they could share that space with someone Tuesday, Thursday, to also continue reducing the square foot needed?
So that's obviously a county decision, and, but we did factor that into that 80 square feet per person reduction, is that there would likely be some shared space, whether that's a shared office that a couple of people co-share, or a shared cubicle, or just touchdown spaces. It depends probably on that person's needs and that department's needs.
You know, everything that I read today, talking about major companies especially, in places like New York, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, companies are already walking away from office space and don't plan to go back because it's more efficient for them and for their employees to work at home. You know, of course, you're talking about driving time for some of those people, one hour, one way, whatever. But I think with technology and as we look ahead, and it's going to be even better, that realistically, even here in Buncombe County, we need to seriously consider telecommuting because it's going to happen. And when you look at childcare and a lot of the, you know, other things, it's, you know, it becomes more convenient to do. I think we're going to have to be realistic in looking at that because it's coming whether we want it or not. And I think the companies and the organizations who adjust first will get the best employees because that's going to be something that people are going to look at, and I hear from a lot of younger employees now, you know, they're looking at that when they look at employment. So, you know, hopefully, I hope we'll be ahead of the curve with this and look at that, you know, seriously.
I guess my question is, you know, there are these desirable aspects to it, both from, like, employees, a lot of them like it, the commuting, you know, rush hour traffic. I mean, there's a lot of different kind of organizational and even community benefits from this. I wondered, with, you know, the pandemic being, you know, still such a relatively you know, still being so, such a relatively new phenomenon, that so many people are doing this. Have we really had time as an organization to evaluate? I mean, certainly employee preferences should be taken into consideration, but from an organizational standpoint, do we see, you know, a deterioration or an improvement in productivity? And, you know, I mean, I think at the, the first consideration I would want to think about is, like, what's the best thing for the organization to make sure we deliver the public services that we are here to do, right? I think that's got to be our first, the first question we ask about this. And, and if we, you know, and if we're seeing that, hey, we can have a lot of telecommuting that where we see no drop-off in the quality of the services that we provide, then I'm totally open to it. But I want to carefully look at it because this is kind of a, kind of a new societal phenomenon, in some ways, in terms of it being done at such a large scale. So if we go into this, I would just want to really keep our eye on that, and I'm sure, you know, as Terry said, I think people's views on this will probably look different in a year from now or two years from now. So I think we should just keep our eyes on that, that question. I don't know if there's any initial feedback on that now.
Yes. Prior to COVID, the county already had a semi-telecommuting policy, several folks, and human services are already telecommuting, especially the back office folks, that all they do all day long is call people. So they're already telecommuting. IT's got some telecommuting folks as well. So that has been something we've been doing. We did add that up during COVID because of space or people that had needs as far as health risk or even childcare needs. We did allow more people to telecommute. But we, we can look at data from before COVID and can show that the productivity did not reduce. People were still producing. We were pretty intentional in how we look, I can hear myself talking, this is terrible. We were pretty intentional on how we looked at the departments that could telecommute. We wanted to make sure that any department that was forward-facing still had a presence in the office, and you can tell, we never really closed the county offices. But those that could work from home in a safe way and still produce the benefit to the community, we did allow that. The ask tonight would be, if you want to extend that and continue that beyond the temporary that we did put in place, we put an emergency temporary policy in place. If we're going to talk about that more, there's so many more buildings and so many more dominos that this could impact, that we can have better quality services to our community. And when I say better, the one that comes to mind is the driver that she put on the screen, around if we were to use 40 Cox. We built 40 Cox, but we never really put all the people there to fully fill up, to fully fill all the space in 40 Cox. When you look at that, we can have almost all of 35 Woodfin available. And if you have telecommuting, fill up 40 Cox, you have an opportunity to put all the folks that are front-facing and are land development services together in one location. So when you come in to conduct businesses for land, they're all in one place. So this is the first domino to really help us to decide what is the outcome of this study? If we're going to, like you said, think about it for two years, but don't get rid of any property at this point in time, then that's something that we could study. But there's other opportunities, too, if you want to think about this as a longer-term basis.
This is, oh, sorry, same issue. This is a great conversation. What do we hear from employees who may not have the greatest internet at home or cell service? And how that intersects with remote working and those kind of issues?
Like, we were, and, we were pretty intentional in how we look at that. So some folks can have a hotspot if it was required. We looked at people are in the field a lot, that they don't have to be in an office, so they could telecommute, like our social workers, adult children providers. We haven't had a lot of feedback of employees that can't have access to work from home. We told them, if that's not an opportunity, there's a building here that you can come to work every day, so you don't, we're not going to upsize your home internet for you to work from home because we already have a facility here. But if you can safely provide service and you can make sure your productivity does not languish at all, you could have the opportunity to work from home. So the people that took advantage of that, a lot of them had kids at home already, then they were going through this virtual learning. So several of them took advantage of that. People that worked from home already decided to go ahead and stay that way. And folks that are on the road a lot, that my inspectors don't have to come into work every single day, my social workers don't have to come, my IT folks don't have to come in the office every day. So they were, we were pretty intentional, who can have that opportunity? It wasn't broad-based across the organization.
Great. A quick follow-up question. As Commissioner Whiteside said, we're certainly seeing a lot of large corporations moving in this direction. And just wonder what we're seeing from sort of other local governments or peer counties, or in terms of how they're thinking about this?
Several counties are still not back open completely because they're still going through, in their mind, pandemic response, but several of them are still looking at keeping their staff at home throughout this process. So I don't think they've made a full decision of what to do in the long term, but several of them are still doing telecommuting.
And I do also want to point out that when we're talking about maybe 30 to 60 people from a department telecommuting, that's nowhere near the entire department size. So there is no plan with those numbers to totally remove an entire department and move that entire department to virtual. Every department is still, has that shared space and the offices for those people who are in.
This might be getting kind of in the weeds, but I guess the only other just kind of question I would raise or just kind of concern, and again, very open to this, I think there are a lot of advantages to utilizing this, you know, technology. Do we, do we create any, but again, I just, I want to make sure that we always kind of keep the ability for the organization to do what it believes is in the organization and therefore the, you know, the public's best interest in terms of how we do this. So if we create more policies around this, do we create any kind of like HR, like, rights for people to kind of choose to do this? Like, does it, do we, do we give up the option of kind of changing it in the future if we're evaluating and saying, you know, we look at this, maybe we went a bit far on that, let's walk it back in some? So that, I just don't, I want to make sure we don't close any doors on being able to adjust it as we deem best in the future. Any other comments or questions at this time? All right, well, I hope that's some, I hope that's helpful feedback. It sounds like there's a lot of openness to, you know, certainly continuing this conversation.
Can I get the PowerPoint back? Thank you. So the next thing that we wanted to take is take some of those drivers one step further for you here and show you the impacts of some of those. So for example, that telecommuting driver, as Avril mentioned, that creates space at 40 Cox, and it also creates space at the interchange, the IT building. Like she mentioned, if the HHS, that HHS staff could move from 35 Woodfin to 40 Cox, or a portion of that staff, that opens up that 35 Woodfin building that does have the parking that, for example, Allport does not, or those forward-facing departments, planning, permitting, tax, air quality, register of deeds, ID Bureau, that could potentially move in there. If general services moves all divisions, so that's grounds, fleet, and the general services department to the new fleet building that's planned, that potentially opens up a, a location for a second ambulance location within the downtown limits at that 40 McCormick. And they currently have a small ambulance location in the basement of 35 Woodfin. And if HHS and air quality move from 52 Cox, and again, that's about a 3,000-square-foot building, so not that large of a space, that opens up that property for construction of a new elections facility, and elections could vacate the leased space at 77 McDowell. And also, that facility, that site is directly adjacent to the Board of Elections Distribution Center as well, so co-locates all of their services. So our second decision point is here. We want to get your thoughts on the options that are listed above.
Well, I think it's a great idea to have those forward-facing departments in one place together and make it so much easier on the public and to have parking, because that's a real challenge for people coming downtown and then having to navigate, figure out where parking is, and try to go to these different places. I think that would make life a lot easier on them, and they would appreciate it.
Could you all tell us a little more about the thinking being having an additional ambulance bay and how that would build more capacity or increase response time?
Did you want us to start?
Yeah, I can start that, yep. So there is currently one ambulance, I believe, one ambulance at the 35 Woodfin location. From my understanding, they have a second ambulance that will be coming within the next number of months or year. That 35 Woodfin location is a challenge to get in and out of, and a challenge to be able to fit multiple ambulances in that basement. There is only the one opening there. So from my understanding, it is about coverage of the city and about being able to increase the amount of ambulances that are within city limits to better cover the city there.
And also it would have a housing for our community paramedics vehicles that parks outside. I think there's actually two ambulances coming out of the bays right now, but there's only like one facility to house it, so we do have that expensive equipment that always protected. We do, we also know that a lot of our calls are in the downtown area, not really out, but having one ambulance to cover this location drives our response time up. So having more than one ambulance, who will keep one at 35 Woodfin, but then we have a bay facility already in place at McCormick, and that would help to have the housing there for a second ambulance as well as a community paramedic's truck. And the flow would just be a little bit better in and out as well.
Could you explain this last bullet for me a little bit further? Are you recommending where or how a new elections facility would be constructed? Or just that we vacated our lease, we would need to do that? I guess I'm just trying to understand your recommendations.
So air quality and HHS are currently in, it's a two-story building on 52 Cox. It is approximately 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. It has egress issues. It only has one exit from the upper floor. And so what we are proposing in this last bullet point is to relocate the people that are in that building into both the forward-facing building and into 40 Cox, demolish that existing small building on site, and build a new building, probably about 15,000 square feet in order to house elections, to be able to vacate that lease at 77 McDowell. Does that answer your question?
Where would that be?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Where would the new building be?
On the 52 Cox site.
Ah, okay.
Which is right across a small street from the Board of Elections Distribution Building.
Not far.
How big is the existing Board of Elections?
The existing one is about, I have to double-check my numbers, but to get, altogether, they have a lot of storage space at Allport as well. So between the existing building and the storage they have at Allport is about 15,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, where's the storage located?
At the Allport building, which, on Valley Street.
The old gymnastics, the gymnastics building? Okay, okay. So that's all full of election stuff?
You think that's in there, is election stuff right now?
And so you would, you would, the idea is to dismantle the gymnastics building?
No, we would, that would stay, but there's a small brick building beside that gymnastics building, and that is where our air quality folks are.
Take down that building, the air quality building?
And build elections.
Leave the gymnasium building?
Yes.
Well, I certainly think the idea of moving elections is a good idea, for sure. I guess my only questions would be, you know, that is prime downtown real estate. I mean, it's in the core of the city. So, and the way I like the idea of building something new there, just considering, like, I would just want us to think through, I don't know, in a way, building, I guess, in a way, keeping that gymnasium building there seems like a real underutilization of that property long term. It just seems like, you just look at it, and you're like, what is this doing? It just seems like, you just look at it and you're like, what is this doing here? At this point in, you know, the growth of Asheville and Buncombe County. So I'd maybe just encourage you to think about that, like what's the future of, of that site? As part of the, it's just part of the thought process on this, but I generally like the idea of moving it. And I just, we just want to make sure we fully utilize that really valuable real estate that we own downtown.
And if we remove the gymnasium, we'll just need to build a storage facility and a warehouse facility for elections, for all the poll books and everything that they have. That is pretty full, I think. It has a lot of storage right now, and that's what we use it for.
Yeah.
So we would need.
I guess that's just my question is like.
We could tear that, if we're gonna get rid of that and rebuild one unit for elections with office facilities, a place to poll, a place to return the polls and counts the polled, it could be a bigger footprint on fifty-two and they'll have to tell me if it could fit a bigger building or maybe more stories of a building. Free up, in order to free up that warehouse and that gymnasium, we would need to find storage as well.
Yeah, okay, I understand. One other question I've got, so, and I feel like it's been a while since we talked about this, but in terms of moving stuff over to thirty-five Woodfin, I mean, I like that idea a lot, that has a lot of appeal. It's a great space and it is very user-friendly. So, in terms of activities associated with Family Justice Center, do we lose any, just talk, can we talk about that a little bit? Do we lose any of the, you know, what we currently have in terms of benefits of how that's situated?
So, the discussion that we've had around this bullet item is to not touch the Family Justice Center. For that to remain in place at thirty-five Woodfin, the proximity to the courts makes a lot of sense. That facility is kind of well-planned out in that location. So it would be using the remainder of the space within that building.
I think that's great. I feel like the public knows thirty-five Woodfin the most out of all of our public spaces at this point.
Just to go back for one second, so, and the question Brownie was asking, is what you all are proposing is that fifty-two Cox get demolished and a new building be built that would just house sort of the offices and core functions election services? And we'd retain the blue building for storage? Or are you all contemplating what Brownie was outlining, which is we'd build a bigger fifty-two, a new fifty-two Cox and could vac, could vacate the, the blue building?
I want you to answer, Rachel, but the original intent was your first comment, that we would just tear down the old fifty-two Cox and leave the blue building. We can go back and actually add this as an option.
Okay, then, in that case, I would like to just second what Brownie said and would be really interested in,
Yeah.
You know, it is quite a, a well-positioned place and would love to hear all kinds of ideas about what we could do there.
It's, it's right, I mean, it's literally across the street from the transit hub, the biggest transit hub of western North Carolina. I mean, people have talked about, you know, childcare, I mean, there's just a lot of different things that for, especially for folks who use transit, like they're pretty much all making a trip there, maybe they're in, going somewhere else. So maybe there's other.
Brownie, affordable housing and childcare, you got me sold.
We could do a big mixed use of rural housing, state-of-the-art 3K early childhood center, is that what you're saying? Is there a slide for that?
The blue building has an entirely different address, right, just for the sake of discussions? Okay, okay. And the fifty-two is that brick building, it's old, it ranks poorly on your, on your status sheet, okay.
Look, I can help you. Fifty-two needs to be gutted, tear it down. I worked in that building for five years. In the last five years I worked, I was in that building. And it's not, it was mountain first.
Mountain first.
After I grew tired. And I can tell you, that building is not good, no. I wouldn't want to be in there now. So, but I like the plan, what we've done. And two, I think, even when we look at the storage building across the street, let's think ahead, folks, you know, the county will be growing. And we need to keep our options open in downtown Asheville, because it's no more land, you know, they don't have it. And I'd hate to see us shoot ourselves in the foot like the schools are doing now, you know, thinking about selling land or getting rid of it when they have nothing to look at in the future. But we need to keep that, you know, keep our options open. But what you're planning here, I think is great, because if I remember, the elections building over on Chautauqua, we are leasing that, and it's a pretty high lease, plus the building is in lousy condition, if you've been through that. It's lousy, you know, I've been in there. But I think this is good, good planning. And if, when we look at utilization of the buildings going forward, it's critical that we, you know, lousy buildings, we get rid of. We don't want to keep them, because all it is is more money that we'll have to spend. But I like what you, you know, propose.
Do we know how much upfilling will be needed to make these moves happen, to accommodate?
Not yet. This is just to get your inputs.
High, high level.
We, we would have that information, but we just want to understand the direction that we want to go in order to put that together.
Can you spend a little more time on, where would, the, the space that planning and permitting are currently occupying? What's the vision for that space?
I'll take that.
Yeah, go ahead.
We haven't discussed a full vision, but it is so close to the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Something that we will look for as overflow. We've talked before with the sheriff about inmates that will come to jail that have mental health issues, instead of putting them in the general population, how can we look for a place that that would look? So that's one opportunity, but we have not really fully explored what would go there. But our hope would be that we could put the sheriff's office in that space as well. So it could be for housing for mental health issues. The sheriff's also in need, he's at Lester Crossing now, but we know that he has inadequate storage for evidence. They're using shipping containers that are not temperature-controlled. So there's opportunities that we can look at to see how can we make sure that footprint becomes a sheriff's office campus for all the things that we know he needs.
Great, I guess I'd just make sort of a, another request like Brownie's, which is if you all could come back with some ideas on, you know, ideas like you're talking about, but maybe in a little more detail on that as well. And I think that would cover.
Register of deeds as well.
Oh, yep, registered deeds too. Yeah, if we could kind of have a chart that's like, any space that's being vacated, either we lease it and we just end that, or if it's county-owned, here's what the new function or the plan would be for that empty space. That would be an awesome addition, at least for how I'm processing this.
Are there any initial thoughts about what we go into, register of deeds?
There's all the needs that we haven't addressed. For instance, training facility, we don't have a place that we truly train. We have a lot of communication needs and Lillian has asked about if there's ever a place that you can have press conferences and the like. We don't have, the space that Hughes is a rented space that we pay ninety thousand a year for, for that little building that Hughes. So there's opportunities that we can have.
Get rid of that.
We can get rid of that and we can move some of those operations to some of the buildings that we currently own, free and clear.
All right. Any other questions or feedback on this, this one?
Well, I would like to add one thing. I'm, I'm supportive and this sounds good, how this is going. Before we go on to libraries, though, since I happen to know something about the ag areas, I would like to just mention a few things of why I think the ag center is a good idea with that. Because the realities of where it is or what we're having to deal with now is it's really complicated for farmers to get there, to have parking, and our different ag services are spread all over. So this is, this would be based on a USA, USDA model, which is great, because then you have your federal agencies in there and they would actually pay rent. So it would end up helping fund the facility as well. And it's so much easier for farmers when they're able to come to one place. And it actually ends up bidding, benefiting more than farmers because of the master gardeners as well. You would actually be able, you know, depending on the space that you end up finding for this, you'd be able to have educational gardens, actually do some soil, soil and water conservation, demonstrations as well, have educational space, because where they are now, they have, well, pre-COVID, they had basically a hundred people wanting to come and be able to do educational events. And they have the space for maybe fifty to fit in that space. So, and there's, there's going to continue to be growth of those educational things that they're offering. So I think there's, that's definitely something that is, would be very appreciated and is needed as well. Oh, and also, because we have rental equipment, a lot of folks don't realize that, but we have rental equipment for farms. And we don't have a place to house that. Right now, it's spread out in different farms around the county. And so it'd be really great in this space to be able to have covered shelter where we could house that rental equipment. And that would make life a lot easier to take care of the rental equipment and for the accessibility for everyone as well.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, for adding all that. All right, what's next?
The one thing I do want to point out, so, so thanks for bringing that up, is if there were any of these drivers that you saw that we didn't have a further discussion on, that you think are high priority items, please let us know about that so that we can move these up in the list as well. With the libraries, like I mentioned, we did a, a much deeper dive into some of those long-term needs and the future library model that we touched on a little bit at our last meeting. I won't go into all the details on all of this since we, we saw this before. But we did do a lot of engagement with the staff, with the board, and with the public to understand what they think the future library of Buncombe County needs to look like and the services it should offer. Just touching on those benchmarking, so again, first in the peer set for physical materials, first for programs, attendance for children's programs. But some challenges with staffing, some challenges with technology that's available to the greater Buncombe County. On the library side, we looked again at a number of drivers and what that impacts. So there are three libraries that are leased facilities. Those are Swananoa, Black Mountain, and South Asheville. In terms of condition of facilities, those four on the list are some of, actually, I believe those four are actually all in the top ten lowest-ranked buildings. The, the construction of the East Asheville Library, how does that impact other adjacent libraries such as South Asheville and Swananoa? Staffing as a whole, there is a large number of libraries in the system, so that is a challenge. And it's a challenge to provide the services that each of those library wants to offer with the staffing that's available. And then the last point, full-service libraries. So a lot of the libraries act as neighborhood, community libraries. They don't have the full range of services that, for example, PAC library has, more of the technology, more of the spaces for meeting. And so if it's important to, to have more of those services available closer to the general public, that's where we're going with this last driver. So reducing drive time to services, that being those other services outside of maybe just the books. The duplication of services, materials available, and then the undersized footprints at some of these other libraries to be able to provide that greater range of services. The current library organizational model has that central library, that red one, that is PAC library in this case. It houses both the central library, all the technical services, administration. And then there are a number of branch libraries. A potential future organization that, that we have explored is, is making a series of regional libraries. Each of those regional libraries having more services available in terms of the technology, in terms of the meeting spaces, in terms of that library of the future model. Bringing the technical services and administration component potentially outside of a library itself, that's a lot of back-of-house things. They don't need to be located within the library, they can be located elsewhere. They don't need to be located downtown, they can be located elsewhere. And then those area branches, kind of serving and making sure that the general public has access, close access. Those models, and this was presented to the library board, and some of their feedback, they did like the, the regional model. They just wanted to ensure that if the regional model is a model that's implemented, that those regional branches still act as that kind of community neighborhood feel, that they don't act as a library without that connection to the community. That making sure that the staff is part of this, that we're looking at not just the staffing efficiencies, but making sure that the staff is available to provide the services that, that they're looking at for these. The library world is changing, a lot of different services are being offered. So making sure that flexibility is built into these to be able to modify as time moves on and as the services offered change. And so our third decision point is there, which library model does the board prefer? And do you have any questions about this?
So I would like to hear more about our library staff. And so are they driving this interest in pursuing this other model? Or was this presented to them and then, then they gave their feedback on it?
Jim, do you want to?
Could you come up to the mic? Thank you.
Sure. We have not talked to the staff about the two different models. They have had opportunities to offer feedback, as Rachel mentioned during the process, but this is just relatively new, the preliminary findings, so they haven't had a, a meeting regarding this.
Part of the, the, um, this regional model was built around the fact that there are staffing efficiencies available, more available within a regional model. So thinking about that and then also looking at how you get those types of services further out to the public rather than having that, that potential central location.
The models were presented to the advisory board, to library board, it was not presented fully to staff. Staff was included on the front end about what the issues are, but the models themselves is to the library board and then to our board of commissioners before we go back to staff.
Okay, well, I would be interested in hearing what the staff who's been actually working in libraries and have that insight, I'd really be interested in hearing what they had to say.
I've got two questions and totally, totally agree with Terry, what Terry just said, but I guess first of all, if you could reiterate what some examples are of what kind of services are available at the central library location today that, that isn't available at, you know, at our current branches. And then I guess the second question would be, in a, in a world where we are moving forward with this, this alternate model, I'm trying to think of like South Buncombe Library, you know, what, what physically, what we need to do to that building physically to like prepare it to be a regional hub. Try to wrap my head around the costs and changes here in this type of model.
Do you want to answer the services question?
Sure. So with PAC, basically what, what you're talking about there is it's, it's larger. You know, most of our libraries have a relatively small footprint, like, as mentioned in the presentation. PAC's very large, it has capacity to do things that the others can't. Not saying that we fully exercised that capacity, it has a larger collection, has larger meeting spaces, can hold larger-scale programs, things of that nature that folks would have to derive from, you know, further out in the community to, to participate in. So that's something that it has done traditionally, but when you look at libraries of the future and the types of services that are being offered, for example, library system where I came from, we had regional libraries and you would build in features, and, and we're doing this to a small degree in the East Asheville Library. Things like maker spaces or audio/video production studios, test kitchens, you know, these like really kind of more active learning spaces than we have now, you know, traditionally with the libraries, but it's sort of a repository with some meeting rooms. You know, we can go be, beyond that now. And so the, the libraries that we have right now have a much smaller footprint. You just can't reverse engineer that necessarily into a smaller footprint like that, that's where the regionals come in. You can build that capacity and spread it throughout the community, if, if that makes sense.
That does. And I, I guess to, to my second point, with these regional branches, are we, are we contemplating building new facilities to meet that, that, or are we retrofitting existing ones or?
It, it might be a combination of the two. Some of the, it depends on which locations would be selected. We haven't gone so far as to say necessarily which ones would be the regional ones. Some of them are on sites that don't have capacity to expand. Some of them are on sites that don't have capacity to expand. So in that case, that is potentially a new regional library in that, in that kind of case. Some of them may be, we looked at that list of leased facilities. Again, those are ones that need the most amount of maintenance over the next few years, and those are ones that maybe would need a replacement within the next few years, given their conditions currently. And so there may be an ability as you're building in and saying, okay, we know we need to do something with this facility to build in that as a regional replacement as opposed to a seven-thousand-square-foot branch replacement.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, I think that, I think the concept is appealing. It is, it is obviously very high-level at this point. So kind of following up on Parker's questions, it's, while I like the concept, like, if we really started having like a more full plan of like, and then here's what it takes to do that, it might be like, that's a neat idea, but wow, that's a lot of capital investment to get there. So I guess that's just my, my high-level feedback, because I think it's interesting, but it's, it's, seems hard to really kind of give like a, you know, a strong endorsement of one versus the other with just kind of such a high-level kind of set of information at this point. So I'm certainly open to learning more, but I love the new East Asheville Library, so, and I'm thrilled we did it. But we also knew, you know, that that one project was an expensive capital investment for us. And so like, how many more of those might there be? Or even if some of them are larger facilities, what that would look like? As we think about all the other capital needs we have too, and obviously, we just have to all be sifted through in a lot more detail.
Right, and this, this plan is going to be completed maybe in April? The timeline on the plan completion is April, so we were trying to get input today so we can finish out that plan. So you've given us some guidance now. The bigger one would be, do we continue the small branch libraries, or do we look at that regional? So we can bill out what that looks like and bring that back to you, and we can also think which locations would be the right ones and give you some ideas of cost. Cost is down the road. But what we wanted to get done today was some guidance on the drivers for county buildings, and as well as our library system, do we continue to lease buildings? If you look at the Swananoa, the Black Mountain, the conversations we had two budget years ago now, it was just staffing, you have one person working, which is not a safety issue. We will come back to you with more staffing to help to make sure those facilities are done. But as you're thinking about investing in the facilities, you want to get your input on what direction we should go long-term. So the capital needs might be a five-year, ten-year capital plan, but we know that we're moving in that direction over time. So that's kind of why we are here today. And then, MCPL will go back, complete this analysis, and come back to us with a plan maybe in the April timeframe that would have some numbers, and then we can decide on first steps to get, do we start this in our budget this year? Which ones, if any, do we start looking at? So they'll be back to you again in April, is that the right timeline? So today was around guidance, and where do you want us to land on some of these decisions?
So, so does this mean that, like, some of the really smaller facilities might not be continued in favor of creating kind of enhanced regional facilities? And therefore, like, you know, there's some additional cost and some, some great new stuff, but we might try to save some money by discontinuing some of the other services we offer now or facilities we offer now?
I think that's part of what we're looking at. If, if we are looking at that regional model, the goal is to be able to look at those drive times and make sure that we're providing services to every part of the community. And if that means that we need to have a branch in a certain location to be able to make sure that we're providing that. If we end up with two branches, for example, with East Asheville, if we end up with branches right next to each other, and people who were going to, to one of them, to South Asheville are now going to East Asheville because it's a nicer, newer library, and we don't have that need, that's something that, that will be considered here.
I mean, for me, I think kind of that level of specificity is just what I would probably need to see to give more meaningful feedback for you at this point. You know, like with the, I love the slides before around, okay, you know, these, this department's getting here, and then that's freed up, and you can kind of start visualizing it. I mean, to me, it's still, it's still kind of abstract. I like the concepts, but until we kind of start seeing how it might sort of start playing out like around the county, it's a little bit harder. So I, I think kind of further planning and reporting back to us is what I would be looking for on this. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think from that high-level planning, I certainly, you know, at first glance, really liked the idea of the regional branches. Not everyone wants to come downtown to PAC Library, not everyone has transportation to come downtown. So looking at those regional branches that do provide more services to folks throughout the county, I think is really important. And I hear what the library board is saying about staying true to the community. I think with this model, though, you could even be more in tune with the needs of the community with those smaller branches, and provide the services and the programs that a particular community needs. So I think if planned correctly, it surpasses the need, the concerns about that true feeling of a community. I think we can design it so it creates even more community, and a place that people want to come to. So high-level, I think, I certainly hear that, the concerns, but I think I'd like to see a little more planning, but I'm pretty excited about it.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, thank you all. Are there any other things you wanted to, is this the last slide that you wanted to review with us on facilities?
I think so.
All right, great, well, thank you very much, and thanks for all the great work that's been put into this so far. And we'll see you in April. Okay, Avril? Okay, great. That's concluded the business we wanted to take care of now, so we're going to adjourn, and our plan is to reconvene at five o'clock for our regular meeting.